Good morning, everyone. I am pleased to call to order the February 21st, 2019 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three commissioners. And I want to thank my case and the President Judge for allowing us to upgrade our meeting location to this much nicer room. We'll be back, I'm sure, in two weeks. Thank you so much. Also want to thank Public Property and, of course, John Doyle, who films our meetings every week to make sure that we would still, although we can't livestream it, get this meeting recorded and posted on our website. So, thank you for accommodating us on this somewhat difficult day. And with that, I will ask our Juror Commissioner, Joanne Elschevsky, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I also want to note the presence of our Controller, Karen Sanchez. And with that, we will move on to opening Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Lawrence?
On Tuesday, I joined my two fellow Commissioners at our EOC, where our Department of Public Safety was awarded the ESGR, which stands for Employee Support for Guard and Reserves. General Wesley Craig, a retired Army General, was there, and this award was in recognition of the help that Public Safety provides to our reservists. So, we were very proud to be there, and I just wanted to make sure that that was acknowledged.
Great. Thank you so much. And I would like to invite everyone to join us in our celebration of Black History Month this year. The date is Wednesday, February 27th. The event will run from 10:00 to 2:00 in the Montgomery County Human Services Center, which is located at 1430 DeKalb Street. And this year, we will be honoring the migration of Black Americans by celebrating Black culture and with inspiring speakers, live music, spoken word, food, and historic displays. And I would really urge everyone to attend. This is a lovely event every year, and I'm looking forward to being there myself. With that, I will take a motion to approve the minutes of the February 7th, 2019 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners.
So, moved?
Moved by Commissioner Gail.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Well, as you all know, once a year, we pause for a moment to deliver a State of the County address. It's an opportunity for us to reflect on what's gone on in the past year and report it out to all of you, the people who this impacts most. Today, I am very pleased to report to you that the state of Montgomery County is strong. We ended 2018 with a budget surplus. We've made tangible progress toward the ambitious goals in our Monaco 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which envisions a vibrant economy, sustainable places, and connected communities across Montgomery County. I'm grateful for the opportunity today, together with my fellow Commissioners, to share the details of some of these accomplishments with you. Montgomery County's financial health has never been stronger. For the second year in a row, we adopted a budget without a tax increase. This same budget invests in our priorities, including increasing our general fund reserve to $88.5 million, a full 21.1 percent of the overall budget. We've come a long way from seven years ago, when our county faced a $10 million budget deficit and a depleted reserve fund. We've done this by making hard choices and sticking to fiscal priorities, investing in long-term capital planning, and fixing our aging infrastructure. We created a dedicated funding source for the Montgomery County Community College, a critically important investment in the county's workforce and overall economic health. We've made these investments and many more that you will hear about this morning while continuing to have the lowest county property tax rate among the four counties surrounding Philadelphia. The strength of our finances is also directly related to why Moody's raised Montgomery County's bond rating to AAA in 2018, the highest credit rating a government can achieve. That enables us to borrow money at the lowest interest rates possible, reducing debt service, and gives us room to continue investing in the critical infrastructure that improves the services we offer the residents of Montgomery County. We're committed to providing our residents with high-quality services, and to do so, we need to attract the highest level of talent in the region to work for Montgomery County. We are the first suburban county in the southeastern region to offer paid parental leave of up to six weeks to all eligible Montgomery County employees, regardless of gender, during the 12 months immediately following the birth, adoption, guardianship, or foster care placement of a child. We know this benefit will help employees, families, and communities, and will improve our ability to recruit and retain high-quality employees to better serve our residents. Infrastructure improvements and the services we provide our residents are a key component to the robust and vibrant economy we enjoy here in Montgomery County. A strong infrastructure is at the core of the quality of life factors that attract so many people to the county. We've helped create places where people want to live and work and open a business, and keeping Montgomery County sustainable is one of my top goals. Guided by the priorities and our Monaco 2040 Comprehensive Plan, we continue to build our farmland preservation program, preserving over 9,500 acres of farmland so far. This represents nearly one-third of the farmland in Montgomery County, and we are on track to preserve another six farms in the coming year. Traffic congestion has an enormous impact on our residents' quality of life. We've taken a number of steps to reduce and better manage traffic, and these efforts are ongoing. During 2018, we broke ground in Phase 3 of the Lafayette Street reconstruction through Norristown, and that work will continue through this year and into 2020. This project will reduce congestion on Main Street, Ridge Pike, and Conshohocken Road, and it is expected to draw private development along the Schuylkill River in Norristown, a key component to the future growth of Norristown. We used revenue from the $5 annual motor vehicle registration fee we adopted in 2016 to partner with 13 of our municipalities and fund 17 projects under the Montgomery County Transportation Program in 2018. The county provided nearly $1 million to match the municipalities' contributions toward PennDOT's Green Light Go projects for traffic signal upgrades and improvements. And you'll hear more about how this fee has enabled us to advance many bridge repair projects from Commissioner Lawrence. We also partnered with our municipalities through the Monaco 2040 Implementation Grant Program. This program helps communities implement our comprehensive plan at the local level by assisting with projects that meet the plan's goals. From the start in 2016 through 2018, the Implementation Grant Program has funded 41 grants totaling $3.9 million. The 2019 cycle of the program is underway right now, and the deadline for municipalities to apply for their share of a total of $1.5 million in grant funding is March 1st. One major goal of the Monaco 2040 Plan is improved transportation options for our county residents and workers. Toward that end, we've been working with SEPTA for the past several years on the King of Prussia Rail Project. This project will extend the Norristown High-Speed Line to King of Prussia and is projected to create between 4.3 million and 8 million square feet of new development and between 17,000 and 29,000 new jobs over the next 20 years. It will create numerous economic opportunities in Norristown and reduce vehicle miles traveled each year by nearly 18 million miles. As a physician, focusing on the health of our communities is part of my daily work. No single public health issue has received more attention than the epidemic of opioid overdose, which has impacted families in every neighborhood in this county. While much remains to be done, we believe we have turned a corner when it comes to the number of lives lost to an opioid overdose in Montgomery County. In the first three quarters of 2018, the number of fatal overdoses in Montgomery County dropped 17 percent compared to the same period in 2017. Fatal overdoses from heroin were down 42 percent, and deaths from fentanyl were down 19 percent in these first three quarters of 2018. Montgomery County took an early lead in combating the opioid epidemic by forming a county-wide overdose task force to provide a coordinated, comprehensive, and community-involved approach to fighting opioid use disorder, and we are seeing that coordinated effort produce results. One tool in this effort is making sure that the lifesaving medication naloxone is readily available across the county. Where previously only EMS units carried naloxone, using grant funding, we now have all 50 police departments and some fire companies in the county carrying this lifesaving drug. We also provide naloxone kits free of charge to eligible nonprofits and schools, and distribute free naloxone kits at all of our health clinics. This year, the Department of Public Safety will use a $1 million grant to develop an overdose surveillance system. It will compile data about drug use patterns of both non-fatal and fatal overdose victims in real time. This will give our team the ability to quickly focus our resources on communities and individuals at greatest risk for drug use and overdose, and implement data-driven responses to further reduce drug overdose death. Most importantly, we need to help individuals with a substance use disorder get connected to treatment. Our drug treatment court has been highly successful in this effort with individuals who are justice-involved. I am working closely with our Department of Health and Human Services to improve the process of warm handoffs across the county, to connect someone who has just survived an overdose to immediate treatment. These are just a few examples of the steps we have taken to ensure that our county will continue to grow and thrive, be welcoming to anyone who wants to live or work here, and be able to provide the high-quality services that you expect and deserve. None of these successes would be possible without our dedicated and professional county workforce led by Chief Operating Officer Lee Soltziak. I want to thank each and every one of you for your public service and for continuing to make Montgomery County an inclusive, vibrant community to live, work, and play. And with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Lawrence.
For the past two years, I've had the great honor to serve as Montgomery County Commissioner, and we should all be proud of the work that we have done to make Montgomery County thrive. But we also need to be cognizant that, as Commissioner Arkus said in her remarks, despite that all Montgomery County has to offer, with a vibrant economy, high employment, educational opportunities, and quality-of-life amenities, we still have problems, and we still have citizens who are in need, and we must work to address those needs. Val and I recently participated in Your Way Home's Point-in-Time Count, during which volunteers go out and count the number of people who are homeless and living out in the elements or living in shelters on a given day. As I have said, I found it very disturbing to see people here in Montgomery County at night, under bridges, and on playgrounds. Your Way Home Montgomery County is a public-private partnership that works to improve the housing stability, economic security, and health of people who are experiencing homelessness or at imminent risk of becoming homeless, and their efforts have been highly successful. Since its inception in 2014, the annual Point-in-Time Count has gone down 47 percent. That includes a 50 percent reduction in homelessness among families with children. That compares to just this 5 percent reduction in homelessness in the rest of the state over that same period of time. This year, Your Way Home launched its EPIC program. EPIC stands for Eviction Prevention Intervention Coalition. This program is a court-based program that includes representatives from the Bar Association and legal aid to provide pro bono representation to tenants facing eviction and connects them to social services so they can regain housing stability. Your Way Home's success shows that when nonprofits, the government, and philanthropic groups work together, we can keep people housed, and we can prevent problems like homelessness from occurring in the first place. Serving as your county commissioner has given me a new perspective on everything the county government does to improve and protect the health and safety of our residents, and to make sure they have educational and economic opportunities. As your public officials, it is at the heart of what we do, and that is why it's invitably important for us to provide a long-term voting system that is both safe and secure for our residents. At our last meeting in December, we voted to purchase a new voter-verified paper ballot system that will accommodate our 425 polling locations and nearly 600,000 registered voters. Our voter services department and senior staff are working diligently to have the new system ready for the May 21st primary election. The new system's reliance on a simple paper ballot will deliver the highest degree of confidence in our election process. Voters will mark their selection on paper ballot or on an ADA-accessible touchscreen, which will print the voters' ballot selections. They will have the opportunity to review their choices and then cast their ballot privately and anonymously by entering the paper ballot into a scanner that will be located at the voters' precinct. This system is ADA-accessible and meets all state and federal security requirements, and will provide a paper trail that can be audited to ensure accurate results so we can ensure that every vote is counted. We are dedicated to providing a smooth, seamless, and transparent transition to the new voting system, and we have an extensive and robust public outreach campaign planned. The public will have several opportunities to try out the new system before the May 2019 primary. The long-term safety and security of our residents is also at the heart of our county campus plan, a 10-year construction project to renovate our courthouse and government offices in Norristown and build a new justice center. The first phase of that project, securing One Montgomery Plaza, is complete and has dramatically improved the safety of our employees and residents who come there to do business. The second phase is currently underway. One Montgomery Plaza has been sheathed and scaffolding for years because the exterior facade was literally falling off. Work is now underway to peel that facade off and replace it with a far more attractive, modern, and energy-efficient skin, and we can take down the scaffolding then. We're committed to keeping the cost of the county campus renovation as low as possible while also meeting the needs of the county and our residents for the next 100 years. That includes creating an energy-efficient county campus that will contain cost and serve as a catalyst for the revitalization of downtown Norristown. We are also committed to maintaining and improving what are arguably our greatest assets. Over 2 million people visited our seven parks, four historic sites, and over 90 miles of recreational trails in 2018. Our Bike Monaco Plan aims to improve bicycle mobility and safety and connect our residents and visitors to bikeable places. In the coming year, we plan to fund additional trail projects to improve mobility, reduce pollution, and congestion, and spur additional economic growth. We will finalize the design of the Chester Valley Extension, which will connect to the Schuylkill River Trail, begin design of the Cross County Trail to connect to the Green Ribbon Trail, and begin construction on the Penny Pack Trail from Byberry Road to Bucks County, and complete Phase 2 of the Schuylkill River Trail in Pottstown. We've also made great progress repairing another aspect of our aging infrastructure, our bridges. In 2012, 62 of Montgomery County's 130 bridges were structurally deficient in some way. We have repaired or replaced 20 of them, and funding from the vehicle registration fee that was adopted in 2016 has accelerated the process. There are now 35 bridge projects under construction, in pre-construction, or in the design phase. When we finish fixing or replacing all of them, revenue from the registration fee will provide funding to keep our bridges in repair so that we don't see the same problems happening in the future. There's a lot going on in Montgomery County, and we've only touched on a few things here, but none of it would happen without the more than 2,000 county employees who work so hard each and every day to serve the citizens of Montgomery County. So, I'd like to conclude by thanking them for their service.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. I think one of the most important things county government can do, or any government for that matter, is foster a strong economy. By any measure, I have looked at, Montgomery County enjoys a strong and thriving economy. We continue to be home to more jobs than resident workers, making us a net importer of workers. Montgomery County has more manufacturing jobs than any other county in Pennsylvania, and our unemployment rate is consistently lower than both the state and national averages. Our Commerce Department has a loan program for companies that want to relocate or expand their operations here and provide strong workforce development programs through Monaco Works. They work with manufacturers to develop apprenticeship and pre-apprenticeship programs, and will be holding their sixth annual Manufest on March 12th at the Greater Philadelphia Expo Center in Oaks. Manufest brings high school students and their parents together with over 70 employers who will showcase the high-paying and in-demand opportunities they have to offer here in Montgomery County. The Montgomery County Community College works in tandem with those efforts. In addition to its degree programs, the college has certificate programs, career training, and professional development classes at its central campus in Blue Bell and the west campus in Pottstown. An abundance of employment, job training, and educational opportunities are key to why so many people want to live and work in Montgomery County and why many businesses want to locate here. My colleagues mentioned some of the ways county government partners with our municipalities. One of the most important ways we do that is through the services provided by our Public Safety Department. Our 911 call center fielded nearly 800,000 calls in 2018 and dispatched the police, fire, and EMS responders as needed. In light of recent events and as part of its mission to promote a safe community, the Department of Public Safety also hosted a safety and security symposium to provide faith leaders with tools and information to better prepare their houses of worship and congregations for any type of violent or disruptive event. Public Safety also conducted a county-wide fire services study to help municipalities and their fire companies that serve them develop strategic planning for the challenges they are experiencing and will likely face in the future, including dramatic reductions in volunteerism. The Department of Public Safety spent $1.6 million of Homeland Security grant funding on planning, training, and equipment in 2018. In addition to the fire study, it prepared plans for hazardous material response, mask care, and debris management. The department implemented the first county-hosted records management system in 2018 that allows 33 law enforcement agencies in Montgomery County to share information and intelligence in real time, all at no cost to the municipalities they serve. In addition, our Public Safety Department provides regular law enforcement trainings, and our Fire Academy and EMS Institute serve as both a primary and ongoing educational resource for all of the fire, rescue, and emergency medical service providers throughout Montgomery County. I am proud to serve in a government that works hard to provide the residents of Montgomery County strong employment opportunities and communities that are safe to live in. They are by far two critical components to have a strong, thriving county. Thank you.
All right. With that, we will move on to resolutions. Mr. Stein?
Yes, the first resolution before you today relates to a TEFFAR approval. You recall, TEFFAR stands for Tax Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act, 1982. This is being brought on behalf of the Montgomery County Higher Education and Health Authority for Ursinus College. Ursinus College is looking to do a refinancing on $13.5 million worth of bonds, which were used to finance their science facility, known as the Innovation and Discovery Center, as well as facility that houses the admission center, community meeting rooms, as well as other capital improvements done. The original project was actually approved by the Board of Commissioners back in November of 2016, and this will just allow them to refinance at more beneficial rates.
Great. Thank you. Is there a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby approves the project for Ursinus College as described in this resolution, and approves the issuance of the bonds by the Montgomery County Higher Education and Health Authority for the financing of the project? Be it further resolved that the approvals and declarations in this resolution shall in no way pledge or otherwise obligate the credit or taxing power of the county, nor shall the county be liable for the payment of principal or interest or premium, if any, on any obligations issued to finance the project, nor shall the county have any obligation or liability whatsoever with respect to the project. This resolution shall take effect on the date of adoption hereof.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Lawrence, second by Commissioner Gail. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we'll move to some appointments and reappointments to the Montgomery County Transportation Authority Board. Is there a motion that the following individuals be appointed or reappointed to the Board of the Montgomery County Transportation Authority? The new appointments being proposed are Laura Frain to be appointed to fill the remaining term of Charles Taborn, which expires December 31st, 2022, and Janet Cunningham to be appointed to fill the remaining term of State Representative Stephen Malagari, which expires December 31st, 2022. And reappointments, Tom Kohler for a term to begin immediately and expiring December 31st, 2023, Allison Slazowski for a term to begin immediately and expiring December 31st, 2023, John Kennedy for a term to begin immediately and expiring December 31st, 2023, and John Wicker for a term to begin immediately and expiring December 31st, 2020. Each appointment and reappointment serving at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is a reappointment to the Montgomery County Agricultural Land Preservation Board. Is there a motion to reappoint Brett Altman as the builder representative for the Montgomery County Agricultural Land Preservation Board for a term expiring on December 31st, 2021, and serving at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Soltziak, advertisement of an RFP.
Yes, sorry. We have one advertisement this morning. The first is an RFP on behalf of the Public Safety for Consoling Services to create the National Emergency Number Association compliant address points. The successful firm will create a point GIS data layer for each livable occupied structure in the county. They will verify and assign addresses to structures. It will create an NENA-compliant address database, and they will provide address data and process improvements necessary to ensure reliable, high-quality support of public safety agencies providing computer-aided dispatch. And there's also one advertisement for the Southeastern PA Regional Task Force. That's an RFP for a regional debris management tabletop exercise. The successful firm will develop and conduct regional debris management tabletop exercises for the five regional counties. The goal of the exercise will be to evaluate the region's ability to manage a large-scale debris generating event. And as a reminder, all bids and RFPs are available on the county's public purchase website at moncopa.org/purchasing.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the preceding request for an advertisement of an RFP, as well as the advertisement on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force, as described by the Chief Operating Officer Lee Soltziak, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gail?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Any public comment? Here.
Just a little bit.
Could you please step up?
I'm just asking Mr. Soltziak to speak a little louder because I'm strained to hear. I can read, but then he talks more about it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Soltziak, awards of contract.
A little more reluctant.
Yes. Good morning. The first is a contract renewal for public safety for an internet provider. The award goes to Kinver, the award goes to Kinver, in the amount of $29,172. The contract provides for connection to the Keystone Initiative for Network-Based Education and Research, which is a statewide platform for connecting members through facilities-based fiber optic networking. The contract provides for monthly service fees for internet commodities, Ethernet port service, and point-to-point service. The service is proprietary. The second is a contract renewal for the Controller for Actuarial Services. The award goes to Corin Ferry in the amount of $42,024. The contract provides for actuarial services for the retirement board of the employee's retirement system. This is the first of two optional annual renewals. Number three is a contract award for public safety for maintenance. The award goes to Integraf Corporation in the amount of $432,014.49. The contract provides for the proprietary hardware and software maintenance for the 911 computer-aided dispatch system. The contract is valid for the period of 4/1/2019 through 3/31/2020. Number four is a contract award for ITS for maintenance for Infore in the amount of $265,561. The contract provides for cloud-based maintenance. The contract provides for cloud-based maintenance for the county's proprietary financial system. The contract is from 3/14/2019 to 3/13/2020. Number five is a contract award for Health and Human Services for hardware. The award goes to CDW Government in the amount of $47,538.99. The contract provides for laptops with accessories and warranties for use by various Health and Human Service offices, and the laptops are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Number six is a contract award for assets and infrastructure for a vehicle. The award goes to Curtridge Fleet Services in the amount of $22,418. The contract provides for a 2019 Ford Escape to replace an aging roads and bridges vehicle. The vehicle is available through a PA DGS contract. Number seven is a contract award for Health and Human Services for a consultant. The award goes to Temple University in the amount of $25,000. The contract provides for an evaluator for the Bureau of Justice Assistance Stop School Violence Prevention and Mental Health Training Program. The RFP was viewed by 46 providers with two responses received. The contract was awarded to the highest-rated provider. The contract amendment number eight is for the Planning Commission for Engineering. The award goes to Alfred Benish &amp; Company in the amount of $11,350. The contract provides for engineering services required for flood mitigation design at 6007 West Valley Green Road in White Marsh Township, which is part of the larger Erdenheim Farm Trails Project. The amendment provides for design changes based on the feedback received from FEMA regarding the original design approach. The revised contract value is $105,750. Number nine is a contract amendment for assets and infrastructure for engineering. The award goes to Traffic Planning and Design, Inc., in the amount of $9,620.45. The contract provides for engineering design services for County Bridge 190, also known as Keim Street Bridge in Pottstown Borough. The amendment provides for Bog Turtle Habitat Survey Report. And number 10, there is one contract, seven contract renewals, seven contract amendments for Health and Human Services, and the providers and services are on a list in the back of the room. There's one contract award for the task force, and that is for intelligence briefs. The award goes to Verent Systems, LTD, in the amount of $60,000. The contract provides for intelligence briefs for terrorist IED capabilities for the regional counties. The subscription term is 4/1/2019 through 3/31/2020, and the services are proprietary. And that is all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract, as well as the contracts on behalf of the Southeast PA Regional Task Force, as described by the Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Lee Soltziak, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comment? Any public comment?
Pauline Brachio, Townes and Township. I'm just wondering if that number eight contract amendment for engineering, Mr. Soltziak, you said that was for West Valley Green Road. Does that have anything to do with the bridge that is still not repaired, the flooding that you're talking about?
We normally don't get into Q and A in this session, but I will take the prerogative of saying that no, it does not. It's a separate issue. Any other public comment? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. We are now at general public comment, which I want to remind you is limited to five minutes. Any general public comment today? Ms. Brachio?
Pauline Brachio, Townes and Township. When you said there was no increase in real estate taxes, I'm just wondering about the extra tax that property owners have to pay for the Montgomery County Community College. I think that's kind of new. I haven't seen that before. Also, when you talk about not raising taxes, you also raised or put a tax on hotel rooms in our area, and I wonder how did that fly with the tourism board? Because if the hotels are going to be taxed for a room, then they're going to have to pass that on to consumers. I also want to talk about the Family Justice Advisory Board. The mission statement reads, "The mission of FJAB is to examine and address family court issues from a systemic and policy perspective and recommend ways in which the court, public agencies, and private organizations can efficiently, effectively, and collaboratively improve the processes, programs, and institutions." Well, there's a whole lot of words in there. It's not very clear exactly what the mission is, but if the mission is to help people who are drowning in the processes, you're not streamlining very well. And Gary Klein has a lot to do with that, and he's not a row officer. He is an employee of the county, and as I said probably over a year ago, that the buck stops here. You have the financial. You stop the clock if you want to talk. You're not taking my five minutes. No. You stop the clock if you want to talk. Okay. So what I, the other thing that I want to talk about is I went to speak to Mr. Michael Case. Now, on October 4th, he was listed as one of the members. Valerie Arkush is a member of this board, and I can speak about the board.
She is a member of this board. She is, sorry, she's a member of.
Stop the clock or stop talking. Anyway, so Michael Case is now not on the board anymore. Cheryl Leslie is. You have monthly meetings that are not open to the public, so we really don't know what this board is doing. It's brand new, and you still haven't actually clarified that. If you want to help someone, you can help Ms. Mickman, because she's about to be thrown out of her house because Gary Klein illegally terminated her child support. And so on that point, Ken, if you want to talk about counting the homeless, you're going to have to count Ms. Mickman and her son in that very soon. So, you know, Judge Cunahan is denying her appeals, denying her any ability to be heard in court, and Judge Del Richie, he can do something about that directly, and he does nothing. Okay? So Michael Case does nothing, Judge Del Richie does nothing, and, you know, courts can do what they want. Judge Cunahan gets away with whatever she wants to get away with. Meanwhile, Elaine is being put out of her house, and her child support is illegally terminated.
Isn't the last thing to terminate the child is rolling through the mat and forth?
This is important to the, they have the ability with the money to control things. The buck stops here, literally and figuratively. You have a son who is also on the spectrum, and you don't give a darn that Ms. Mickman is going to be thrown out of her house when her son is on the spectrum. He's entitled to support until he's 21. He's not even 18.
Ms. Brachio, I'm going to ask you to please stop.
You don't have to ask me anything. I'm done.
Any other public comment?
All right, commissioners. I am bringing to your attention that, well, I'm reiterating what Ms. Brachio said, and instead of assisting with stopping homelessness, the commissioners are basically assisting it. They're directly involved in helping that procedure to occur by not doing anything that goes on with domestic relations, where support is being terminated, not enforced, not properly established, and this is a direct contribution to people losing their homes and foreclosures. I am not alone. I know a number of people similar situation as mine. I also had, curious about the separation of power with that family advisory board. It seems that it's being used for your convenience somehow, and then at the same time, an excuse is given out that there's a separation of powers when somebody comes to the commissioners for assistance. And another point I'd like to make is that, a question actually, but I don't understand why there's about 20 different outsourced legal firms for the county. That creates an excessive conflict of interest when those various law firms have other cases in the court here, and it presents a major conflict of interest. There's a lot of currying of favors going on. There's no reason why the county can't outsource one major law firm to compense and take care of any legal additional matters. So I'm putting that out there, and, you know, it should be considered that we make some changes there. And, you know, that's it.
I just do want to reiterate as a point of information for the audience that the judicial branch is a separate branch of government and that they, that we as county commissioners have no jurisdiction over their legal judgments and how they enforce and implement those legal judgments. Any other public comment? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to closing commissioners' comments. Okay. Then I will announce that our next meeting is March 7th, 2019, hopefully back across the street in One Montgomery Plaza, and I will take a motion to adjourn the February 21st, 2019, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comments? Public comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. And we'll invite the Controller up to the dais for salary board. Ms. Pardue to the podium. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, members of the salary board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the salary board list. It is an eighty-three-page document dated Wednesday, February 20th, 2019, with the timestamp of 9:31 a.m. Of note, we have three retirees, Gary Klein from Domestic Relations after 20 years, Frank Snow from Juvenile probation after 42 years, and John Austin from the Parks Department after seven years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for salary board consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the February 21st, 2019, salary board presentation as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Pardue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Is there any negative vote? Hearing none, motion carries. Is there any general public comment on salary board? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn the February 21st, 2019, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments? Public comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.